Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Debbie.
Well, good morning, Donnie.
Welcome, everyone. We're glad to have you all here. We're in a little behind schedule, but we'll try to speed things up a little bit. It's great to have you here to talk about this system that we have and to answer questions. That's the biggest thing. We can't answer a question unless you ask it. So that's what this morning is for. So without any further time of me talking, I'm going to turn it over to Megan.
Good morning. So I've pulled the system up on the screen, but I've met with, I believe, ninety percent of you individually and showed you the system. So I don't want to bore you with a big presentation if we don't need it. The purpose of this is really just to have a conversation on whether or not the system is meeting the needs of the county. And if not, what are the things that it needs to do? And if I can get it to do them or not? So that's really the premise of this conversation. So I'm more than happy to go through the system, but I also don't want to waste anyone's time. So if you don't want me to do that, I'm okay with that, too. I'm just going to click down through it a little bit. And then I think the next thing we're going to do is just open it up for discussion on what we like, what we don't like, thoughts, and move on. So this is a manager's point of view. This is a test employee. When you first log in, this is what the system looks like. You can see I've opened their performance review on this employee. So this is the task that it has on the dashboard. And then as you go through, you can click Inheritance Tasks. You can see People. It shows just your team at first, but we can pull... You should be able to pull me up potentially over here on your work chart. You can see everybody's... I only have emails. I have Amber's desk phone, but I only have emails in here for now. I know we have them on our phones. You can just dial people. But I do feel like this is helpful. There is app for NeoBev. So those of us like Highway or Facilities that don't have a desk phone where you can just look up people's extension, this system hands for those numbers and they can find the numbers for everybody's desk phone. There is a Performance component to NeoBev, so you can see this person has the Performance opened on their employee and they're supposed to submit content. Again, I'm not going to go into all the details because I've done it with most of you individually. There's a whole Training component here. We're doing our OSHA Training Group this year, but that's not the only thing you can do in this system. We can actually form our own trainings. So you can see the 2025 Open Enrollment Meeting is in here. There's hundreds and hundreds of trainings on many different topics. I've actually talked with IT about putting like little knowledge bites in here from them, like how to clear your cookies, those types of things. Each individual department can actually create training. You can do in-person training and log it through here. You can log certifications. It can let you know when stuff is coming up on expiring or when you need continuing add. It's pretty robust. You've got the Onboarding component in here, so anyone that's on-boarded through this system in the past two years would see all of that on this screen. Everyone else, it's not going to be in here because you were on-boarded prior to the system, but you still have access to all of this information. This is probably my favorite part of this entire system because you have access to everything we send out in emails. I'm pretty positive all of HR's emails go immediately into everyone's trash. That's what I think. So any documents that you need, it's all right here. So the Employee Guide to TCP, Payroll Schedules, Holiday Schedules, the Employee Handbook. It links out to Time Clock Plus, the Boone County website. It pulls in job descriptions if I have them in the system. And then the Benefits Portal has all the 2025 benefit information, links out to Steel, which is our Ben Admin System, Perf, UMR, Delta Dental, which I'll switch it here to Reliance in 2025, Hoosier Start, KeyBank, HSA Link, Public Student Loan Forgiveness. And then each section details all this information that prior to the system, you would have to contact me to get it. Now, it's at your fingertips whenever you need it. You have a spouse that's like, hey, what's this benefit? What's going on with this? All you have to do is log in at home and you can show them exactly what they need to see. There's a component called E-Forms, so everything that you fill out via paper that we print out and send to you can all be done electronically in this system. There's a little Quick Links tab. I'm constantly adding new forms. I have a couple of requests to add, like the Perf Voluntary Contribution Form. And as like I've been building out the system, I'm adding new forms. It does take a lot to build the form and then build the process associated with each form. I have requests to the FMI in here. That's a lot of if this, then this, if this, then this. You need this form for this. I'm going to build it out. I started it. It's not quite ready yet. But this is where I'm at so far. Again, it prevents everybody from having to print the form, fill it out, scan it in, email it back. So it's pretty cool. And then it keeps track of all the processes, so you can keep track as a manager of your team if they've been assigned forms. If you're an HR user, you can keep track of the progress on your department. And then I can quickly run a report to see who's filled out their responsible card where they need to track down, those types of things. Employees can also see the forms that they submit, so there is a little Documents folder. Everyone has permissions to certain folders. I have it pretty locked down. They don't want anyone to see information they shouldn't see. So again, like when I meet with your departments one-on-one, this is one of the things we talk about on like what you need to see, who needs to have access to what. Right now, this is what managers can see. Employees have different access. Different users have different access. Does that make sense? And then the last thing is reporting. And as the Test Manager, you don't really see what we see as administrators, but my second favorite part is just the reporting we get in this system. We get so many different reports that leadership needs to properly evaluate, to make decisions on different things throughout the organization. I think Council and Commissioners really need these reports. And I can actually create custom dashboards for the individual departments. So I'm just now learning how to run like more advanced reports in the system. But if you guys want to just meet on reporting and you want me to create a custom dashboard for your department on turnover rates, who hires, terminations, there's a whole bunch of different stuff in the system. We can sit down and do that. Questions?
What kind of reports are you going to talk about that would be helpful? Just curious.
So I like the... I'm weary of being me because I see too much. I like the applicant reports, so you see a lot of like EO reporting, you see cost to hire, you see time to fill, those types of things. I like annual terminations, annual new hires. As we build Core HR, I can do reporting on custom fields. So if we build out the system on like who has different types of equipment, those types of things, you can easily run reports on what a specific person has access to and what needs to be ended. So there's a whole lot more to build as we go into Core HR. But what we have right now, I really like the applicant reports. I really like the staff reports.
Could you see what, who, like for a department? I know Nick does annual reviews and other reviews, so you can see how many reviews have been done for that department, who doesn't have a review.
Yep. Who are key performers, who are high performers, who are low performers. Yep. You could run all of that in the system.
All right. Please do it again.
Yeah, Megan, a question on that. Sorry, today.
Yeah, you're fine. You go.
On that, on the Performance Reviews, that would be locked into the manager, correct?
Yes. So how all departments currently are set up, other than Prosecutor's Office, only the manager is seeing those reviews, or the manager's manager, if you have that type of structure. If you have an HR user in your department, then they have access to that as well. But that's why like really tailoring the access to each department on who you need to see what is really important. And that's why we sit down and we talk about public. But originally, it's just that manager and the manager's manager.
Right. I knew that, but I want to make sure it's clear on that to let you know that this is not public information. This is for the manager, the elected official, whoever's in charge of that.
Yes.
So I get ideally what this funding to continue for forever, but if I start putting my evaluations in here, like how long is this contract exists? Like if I put my evaluations in here this year and then the Council doesn't approve it next year, like I just, I would love to do everything online because like that's, you know, what the world is coming to. But I just don't want like next year, the system to be gone. And it may not be a question for you, it may be something for the Commissioners of the Council. If we put all this information in here, we, you know, build up the program, which is great, how long is this like guaranteed to take a while for right now? And is this something that the Council, you think, is going to support for a long term that we're going to keep this? Because I just don't want to keep putting things in different areas and then like at the end of the day, I'm like, okay, well crap, I lost five years of work.
Or you have to redo your new system or make your employees do that.
Yeah. Or I have to download everything because, you know, we're onboarding this and going to a different site. I mean, again, I don't mind. I want to do this, but I just...
So, and I think the council members, I would really appreciate if you guys would address this. I get this question every single time I meet with each department. And all I can say, and what I say every time, is the four council members that I've talked to and presented this system to, my understanding is they're fully in support and they want to continue on. I've been told to continue on with Core HR and building it. And let's move forward and we're excited about this and we're going to make funding changes next year. That's all I can say when it's happening behind the scenes. I can't control that it's not happening in public meetings. So we, at HR, all the other departments, we would love for that to be addressed.
I'd like to speak on behalf of the Council, but I think that's something we're going to do next year. I have the same question. I don't think what the Council does impacts that answer, though. Like if we go a different route, like say there's something better that the Commissioners want, we decide to fund that, or we just say no, she's NeoGo, whatever it is, is there a way, like can NeoGo export everything for us that we have it and if we upload it to whatever new systems, we don't lose that information?
Yep.
If it's okay, I'll make a statement.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So guys, our office, we tried to only pay an extra technology. We tried to be paperless. We've done everything we can to be more efficient and also the council. Well, NeoGo to me is a, I guess the acronym is a HRIS system, a Human Resource Information system. I'm not here to advocate specifically for NeoGo. I'm here to advocate for something, either NeoGo or whatever, but we need to have an HRIS system as we go forward. They offer numerous benefits that can help streamline and enhance various functions for various offices. Obviously, it helps more for the larger offices. You know, some of the smaller offices, Debbie, how big's your office?
Four.
Yeah. So I did that. I mean, it's not going to be as productive for your office. But whether it's Formation, Highway, Prosecutor's Office, potentially Sheriff's Department, and other offices that are going to grow, I don't know how big the Health Department is, but I assume it's going to grow. Someone's office will grow. Improve Performance Management, but providing tools for setting goals, tracking progress, conducting evaluations, ensuring employees receive timely feedback recognition. We already have this at state level. I'm a state employee, but we have an HRIS system which we use. They can also help manage and deliver training programs and track employee progress and compliance. The recruiting process is so much more streamlined, it's so much easier, and so much more efficient than this onboard that becomes seamless. Right now, we use a lot of the features, but not all the features. For instance, we really, we've been working with Megan on the performance. We haven't implemented that yet, but we've been testing and trying to build that process. We're holding off on doing anything in that until we have more. We're not going to go down this road unless it's funded. I'm not going to spend the time because the amount of work we have to put into this initially is a huge undertaking and time consuming. But there will be, we will have benefits on the end. So for the performance, we, we're not doing anything in there yet, but we believe that in the future, we can set goals, complete evaluations. Feedback can be collected in forms of notes to be inserted into mid-year annual evaluations that we do. This will save a lot of time in terms of drafting evaluations. Employees can make performance notes throughout the year, which will help the manager look at that and address things in a timely fashion. Training. We do do the training components. They have a large course catalog, which we've already assigned people certain, you know, hey, here's some people that we want to work on boosting their performance levels. We send them training. In the future, we have trainings, our own personalized trainings, which we have on the W-Direct or whatever it's called. We're waiting to put those in there, but we can assign those and track those. Let's see what else. Recruiting. I think this is our best feature that we use. It helps us automate the process. I don't know how you guys do it now, but we've probably on-boarded twelve to fourteen people in the last twelve, in the last two years. This is from attorneys, staff, interns. What we're able to do is we sort of have a drop post, you know, on one of the various websites or programs, or what they call it. Indeed, yeah, whatever. And so we'll put those on there. And then instead of replying to like just my email, they reply to the NeoGo email. And then myself, my Chief of Staff, and my Chief Deputy, we all can access it at one time, see all of them. And then we can, you know, we can assign certain things. We can click one button and it'll send, hit a button that says reject, basically, and then an email to another person saying thank you, but no thank you type of email. Instead of me drap, instead of one person draping that, which all you think doesn't take a lot of time, it actually does when you get forty, when you get forty. You know, people are fine with that. So that's a great, you know, it's immediate notification. You're done right away. It also allows us to talk in there much easier, where we can talk in there and look at hands at the same time versus sending emails and that nature. In the future, we hope to, if this, if we continue with this, we're going to build it where the person picks their interview time. Instead of us emailing back and forth going, hey, you know, it's this time, you know, and sales just say, hey, here's your interview time, you know, it's just like a sign of genius. You pick your time and you want to do an interview. That's going to be much easier for us. Onboarding. We've built a BCPO-specific onboarding page that's unique to our staff and our needs. We also have checklists and forms on there that they fill out, as well as the county forms. We hope to, in the future, we hope to completely automate the onboard process and send all onboard documents and instructions through the system. We're not there yet. But again, seeing all those things, we just check a box and it sends it versus taking all the documents and sending them emails. Forms, probably what are some forms in there? At least we can, these forms, I can go to the state level. I go to, I go to this one website where it says all the different things, has all the different forms I have ever needed. Instead of me going and searching through emails that I've gotten from Megan or from Debbie or whoever, it's all centrally located. Instead of me bothering, you know, the Chief of Staff, hey, where's this document? I need to fill this out. You just go to one place. So we find it invaluable in terms of efficiency, but I will tell you, it's taken a lot of effort and work for us to be where we are now. And that's one of the things is that if we're going to do this, great. But if we're not going to do it, then please tell us now. Because I don't want to spend the time and effort in having our Chief of Staff fully manage this and build this up and make it, because we spent hours upon hours of making a BCPO-specific thing within NeoGo, which they can do for all departments, but it takes effort initially. And so, you know, I don't really, is NeoGo the best? I don't know. Is it the most cost-efficient? I have no clue. This isn't my area of expertise. But I will say there are some things that have been very useful to our office and I see a bright future of what we can use. And so I'm in favor of systems like this and if we can do to continue with it, it's great. But there is a huge Training component upfront for whoever's going to be in charge of your office.
How many employees did you guys charge?
I mean, what was that, hired this year?
How many employees did you onboard this year?
I will tell you that, I went through it in twelve in the last two years.
How many did you do this year? You need to put your Chief of Staff. How many employees did you onboard this year?
I think we're about sixteen, sixteen months, and I think we've done the majority of these since I've been here. So I mean, I would say that we've probably done, with the interns included, I think about twelve this year.
So one month on average?
Yeah.
Kevin Van Hooch, New Cana Council, I'm in complete support of this. I remember eight years ago, excuse me, when I came in here, one of the first things that I as a council member got to check off on and vote on was when the offices over there in the courthouse needed, they had one computer screen on their desk and then they said, many of them over there. You know, it works a whole lot smoother if I had two of them. That way I could grab things over to this screen and then they said, and then they all came, and we approved it. It cost money. We approved it. And everybody came back and said, man, this has worked out so well. We're more efficient over here. We're able to get accomplished what we need to do. And I think about how thirty years ago, how we did everything by paper. Everything was in a car pile out there. And somebody probably got their first computer over there in that courthouse. I have no idea who it was, but somebody got the first computer. And then all of a sudden, everybody else needs it. What? Do you want to spend how much money on computers? Are you guys crazy? And then once they all came in, it was so efficient and it worked for everybody. It worked for everybody. And I'm going to say the same thing with respect to this here. It is something that is needed. This county is going to explode exponentially in the next five years. And we need something like this, that employees of Boone County, Indiana, are able to go and use those tools. And HR, different department heads, different elected officials can go on there and say, here's what you need to do today. Here's what you need to do before the end of the month. All the tools are there. And we all know it's going to cost money. I don't know, I don't remember what those annual or three-year contracts are. I have no idea. And it's going to cost a lot of money, but I'm going to justify it in the same way that thirty years later, after that first computer was installed over there, everybody's comfortable with it now. And even just eight years ago, how everybody used to have one screen on their desk, some of them have two or three. Most of them have two. Some of them have three screens. And then when they can do the work and make it more efficient. So I'm all for it.
Good.
If the Compensation Committee wanted to verify that performance evaluations were done, is that something we're able to see or only the department had seen performance evaluations?
So that would all depend on permissions. Currently, right now, nobody can see them. There's two HR admin in this whole system, or three. There's me, Amber, and Haley. We're the ones that can see everything. County Commissioners, no. County Council, no. If leadership wants to talk about that, but again, I think department heads might have something to say about that, that's kind of up to you guys. We can absolutely run reports and share those with leadership, but...
Yeah, I'm not saying we need that. I was just curious. So if like, if Nick does performance reviews, Nick, like for his employees, he's the only one that can see them?
Yes.
Okay. And then, but then HR can see them, too?
If we look, yes.
Okay.
But Megan, if we did enact a policy change, like we threatened to do a year ago, which was when we went through budget, we said, hey, maybe someday we'll tie merit, you know, part of the merit and cost of living. Part of the merit would be, did they receive a performance review? So if we tied it to a policy change, then we might be allowed, if we all agree on the people that are making those decisions on the Comp Committee, for example, could have access for that day or for that week.
Or can they just have access to evaluations?
They're for evaluation.
Not access to evaluations?
I don't mean evaluation. I mean a report that says...
We can just...
I just want to make sure. I don't want to see someone's evaluation. I want to see whether or not an evaluation got done so that that department had answered the question as to whether or not we're in a performance review policy, as to whether or not we tied compensation increase to, hey, did they have at least twenty? I don't want to see the review.
No, but there are people that can see those reviews outside of the department head.
Right.
The main admin. I mean, so somebody can still see those.
Right. So then I would get a report if I were on the Comp Committee and we had that policy, for example, I could say, oh...
You just want a report that says, yes, he's done, he has twenty employees and they've done twenty of them.
Yeah, that's all I meant. I want to see anybody's...
She wants like the confirmation report that they've been done.
Yep.
How long have we had NeoGo?
Three years.
Three years.
Three and a half.
And so we've been working with this two and a half years, and we've invested a lot of time, a lot of tax payer dollars. And to make a change, costing even more money. I mean, some of the information would migrate, but still, you're going to have to build a whole new platform. And without a doubt, we can't, an organization this size operate without appropriate. So, you know, we either get on board and decide that we're going to change, spend that money, but we, I mean, this is taxpayer dollars. I think we need to get, move forward and just build it out, have it work force.
Okay. I have like eight questions, so...
Your only is one question, correct?
Is it? Okay. Okay. And again, I'm trying to just seek more information here. So I guess my question is, Dan, you just said this program's been in place for two and a half years?
Yes.
So I really have to be honest with you. Why are we just not having a meeting about this system? Now, I have met with you, so Megan, I'm not saying that you, but I'm just saying as a whole, why was there such a delay in getting the, I mean, getting us kind of acimated to the fact that there could be, this could be coming onboard?
Yep. I suggested it.
Okay. Well, so if you had suggested it, would we not be meeting?
I think potentially there just been a lot of questions. This is the IT issue, which I'm not able to understand. And so there is, are we recording?
I'm being on.
It's a public... I'm being on. So one day I played Jingle Ball and I got like ten calls in the middle of the game. I thought the county was on fire. It's not NeoGo, but I'm a little frustrated. And so I suggested that we have a county-wide meeting to get all these questions answered.
And I get that because it's kind of easier than you getting fifty phone calls a day with questions about it.
I'm the last person. I'm the last person that should be called because I am just learning how to use it, too. And so I suggested a county-wide meeting.
Just to address how long we've had it. So how this works is you have to build out every single product. So for each product, like Performance, we just signed off on in April. So the entire system wasn't built out. The first thing we signed off on is Insight. You can't see that in here because I didn't open a fake job for this Test Manager. I'm not going to pull up real applicants. But we've been hiring through this system for two and a half years. That was the first thing we signed off on and we've been using it. For my departments that are good with technology, we rolled it out, we let them test it. We've been using it for a long time. For my departments that are somewhat challenged, I've kind of handheld or emailed applicants and done it the old way as we've slowly rolled this system out. As we signed off on all of these products for each department that they can use, that's when I wanted to roll it out to each, each department in, as a whole system, right? So it takes a lot to set up each product. I have to meet with a project management team for a period of three to five months, depending on my schedule, to actually build the product for the county and then it's rolled out to the departments. So my technology guru departments that are my guinea pigs, they've been using it for longer. The ones that I feel like I needed to flesh out all the keys first, they've been using it for a shorter period of time.
Yeah. The other part of this too is the Council, we funded it, I think, through next year or halfway through next year. And during budgetary, as we had said, that we needed to get more information and study it, decided we're not funding anymore. And I don't know if other council members are even into this as well. I thought it would be useful for us as a whole to hear whatever the questions were asked for.
No, I think that meeting is a good idea. I just would, I just didn't realize that it'd been kind of going on as far as that moment.
Good. I had it, I had it, I think Megan said she's talking before council members. I wrote before, all right. So I'm not working before. I know, too, there's been a statement about the IT surge outage, causing an issue. I'm sorry?
That was a question I had, so please go ahead.
NeoGo is a cloud-based system, I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
Correct.
So there's nothing bad would happen with the IT surge?
No. It's the IT surge has pushed us... No, it's the IT surge has pushed us into really switching up our protocols into utilizing the system more because we did lose data.
We've been using shared drives and then all of those weeks were wiped out. So any data that's put in shared drives, we just want to make sure to go ahead and move forward. It's not based on what we just needed.
I will go back to that, it's a different question. We practiced for three years and I think it was actually Mr. Byer brought it up in his assessment when we were doing the budget report of how much we were paying for this and how much we were actually utilizing. I was on a call with Neoweb counselor, Van Horn, and councilwoman Ritchie. And the question was asked, how much of the system were we utilizing? And it was in that discussion where we told we were not utilizing certain functions and we hadn't been utilizing it. And that's where the discussion came up about not paying for them because we weren't. If I'm not mistaken, I think it was Michael Milson who actually started implementing some of these pieces to try to get to work because we weren't utilizing them. So, and I talked to Jennifer, who I think practiced last week, said, hey, she suggests this meeting on us getting together. So I was trying to figure out the coalition of, you know, if you've had it for three years, what would be strong?
We've had it for two and a half years. And any program that we bring in to anybody, you've got to learn it. And you've got to develop that to this system here. I don't care what kind of program you buy, where it is. The program that I use is the same way, it's cloud-based, it's stored, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If something goes down, I can call them. That's the same way this system is here. We've never had that before. But to bring that in one day and you start using a hundred percent, that isn't happening, no matter what program you got. You've got to learn it. Plus, you've got to change that program to bring it to our level here, whether that's higher level, lower level, whatever. And that's what Megan's been working on for the last two and a half years, is figuring out how this program can work. Our prosecutor just told us how good it is for his office. He has basically, besides Tony, the largest office here with employees and how it's helping him do things so much more efficiently. And like I said, you cannot learn that in the first day, first week, first month when you bring a new program in. You've got to work on that and that's what Megan has done, has changed this program or brought it into Boone County's level of what we need. And that's why this program is so easy because you can change so much on it, step by step.
Jennifer, I think he has some more questions?
Yeah, I did. So Megan, what you are doing as part of what you're trying to do with the system is to develop it out for each type. When I say level of office, I mean like, so if your office has thirty people, that's a different thing that you're... And then if you have ten employees, if you have four or five or six or whatever. So it's different level, so it's the same program, but...
It's very customizable for each department. So if you have different levels to your department, so everyone reports to your chief deputy or your... A structure, we can set that up in the system for your department. Each department can create their own onboarding landing page that only their department can see. If you have forms that are specific to your department, we can put those in there. So it really is very customizable. It's expensive, but it's built for government. And Neogov understands that we're not, government doesn't fit in a box. And we do things differently than other counties and other towns and cities. It's so customizable. This is my third HRAS program in my career that I've really intimately known and built. This is the most customizable, also the most expensive.
Can the official representatives meet with you to figure out exactly what they need, or someone?
Yeah, so I have met with ninety percent of them. I've met with some, like as we rolled out the initial, we've talked about the initial ones and we need to go back and show them new products that have rolled out since we've talked. I've met with some just recently, so like, there is a whole span of education here. But yeah, we sit down, I met with prosecutors' offices weekly to develop their system because it takes so much. And also, I don't know what they can see, right? So it helps to sit in the same room and be like, can you see that? Because I can see that, because I do have it very locked down initially, just to make sure no one can see stuff that they're not supposed to see.
Well, and I want, no, and I want to make clear, she did have a scheduled meeting with Jennifer and I and just to go over the basics and stuff, so I'm not indicating that that didn't happen. I, again, it was just within the last month and a half or so. And again, I, being the last one who's okay with me and everything else.
I have to get all the keys out for you.
There you go, thank you. Now, one thing is that eventually, is there going to be a written procedure for new employees? I mean, do, will they end up, and this is to be, you know, decided, but will they end up coming over here to get everything in the system? Will they end up, then do, will they be going to, and I think people need to see people. So I'm kind of that person. And then would they end up going over with Debbie to deal with the payroll stuff? So then Debbie's got that. And then do they, you know, I mean, just so that they, is there going to be kind of a procedure in place so that we know, we can check that box off? So because you do yours different, you're, I think that you guys are kind of evolved the rest of us. But I really, you know, like if I've got a new employee, I know the one that I just recently hired came over, he went through the system, and so is that going to happen with most offices? Or will they at least will know what to do? I'm going to check off that box to make sure everything gets done.
Yeah, so we do that with every office. I have a orientation, which is about two to three hours, depending on how many questions they are, they have, with every single new hire that we have other than the sheriff's department. So that will not change, I think that's very important. So when you go to hire someone, we put them into Neogov, all of their onboarding paperwork is through Neogov. They can fill it all out and it's all there, starting the first day. It lets county know, it lets facilities know, it lets everybody know that they know and goes through the checklist and the hiring process. So if you need something specific for your department, like we've done with the prosecutor's office, I have a standard checklist for all the departments and then we build it out for them. We can absolutely do that for your department. But it's not going to change orientation. I will still meet with every single new hire on this side of the committee.
Can't, our source is different because, do you pay your intern?
And the onboarding paperwork includes...
Well, I'm sorry, except for one, one is college credit, this is college and high school credit. Who does both pay and help. But they all go through our county policies and prosecutor's laws. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I knew, so you had indicated that some offices had a HR user, I don't know what that, what does that mean?
So like the office staff, so like Amy is indicated as an HR officer, she has a higher level of access.
Okay, so not everybody needs that.
Not everybody needs, and it's up to your department. If you wanted your office manager to have that kind of an access, we would talk about it. But it's not initially given, just so I'm not giving too much information without the department heads. But y'all's call.
Now, so this should be a more efficient system for everybody, am I right about that? So across the board then, you had indicated, so there's funding changes coming, so I don't know, what does that mean? I heard, I thought you said there's going to be funding changes next year.
So we, I understand we funded it, the end of the contract, I think, goes through, end of July.
Okay, so that's...
Then, and we're going to discuss what we have to do after that?
Of course there's discussion, one of those.
Well, I mean, the last, my recollection at the council table was there was a potential to not fund it or fund it very minimally. And so I think at the council table, again, my recollection is we said, why don't we study this a little bit longer since we've put money into it and why don't we determine the usage, you know, part of that, because that phone call, and whether or not there's potential for it to be integrated or we pull it. So I think this meeting is part of that due diligence effort here in terms of, as a council, can we get more educated on what potential this has, what the usage is, what could it be? And again, I think this is part of that effort. So I would think in early 25, we would need to get our ducks in a row and have a discussion about what we learned and what our thoughts are.
I thought during budgetary, someone suggested that council from each study the...
Yeah, I remember the council, excuse me, I remember the budget workshop, there was a discussion around what other options. I didn't know, we were just talking again and saying, all right, this is going to be it. I remember because I subjected multiple alternatives. Then the discussion was a committee, lots of the council, but around other department heads because everyone's usage is unique and different. You have some offices, like Dick said, that had handful of people and their usage is different. What their HR needs are, obviously Dick has a high tendency of seasonal workers, you know, a high degree, manual labor, so their usage is different. I think it's coming up on us to make sure that we put our department heads, but more important, our elected officials to say, hey, what does everyone's needs are? I didn't come to the conclusion of like, all right, Neoweb is it, let's move forward. Yeah, so I was saying is, hey, I don't know what that committee looks like, but if we do put the committee together, I would hope we would have some of that there.
And we haven't done that. And I didn't want, the intent of this to be like, this is what the council's decided, I'm just trying to keep us moving, like clear the information for this one and then hold out the format for me in June where it does.
I've got one more, I'm sorry, no, I'll wait for your next. So you, I'm sure you heard, everyone here, so would there be a way for us not to have to submit to HR our employee evaluations? And let me just say why. Because I feel like that's something that we do internally, but we have the option of letting you be aware if there's been an issue, like if there's like an evaluation that could eventually develop out into a removal, a firing, let's just say that loud. Could we like make sure that you've got that so that you're aware of what the potential could be? But I guess, I think most everyone in here wants, would probably want to know why we would need to submit those. And I'm not being unkind about, I just, the purpose of it.
Number one, I'm on her, let's make that real quick.
Okay, all right, so...
So it would be a policy that I would assume the county commissioners and I would hope the county council would agree to and pass. And I would hope that it would be, like what we've talked about with the compensation committee, would be that it would be guidelines that we would recommend to those boards, that we would hope those boards would pass. So it's not my call. Why I think HR should read performance evaluations is so I can stop people from saying things they shouldn't say. So I've read many of a performance evaluation where they talk about health issues, they talk about things that really shouldn't be brought up in performance evaluations. And number one, I don't think, other than me doing a training that was voluntary, I don't feel like we've had a lot of adequate training on performance evaluations. And number two, it really allows me to address those as they come up before their major liabilities with the county. My job is to reduce your liability and protect you guys and the employees. So I would advocate that I should be able to review them and make sure that nobody's saying things they shouldn't say. We're focused on the performance, we're doing it correctly, we're administering that correctly before it becomes a problem. But again, I'm not in charge.
Would you be open to maybe additional training for that? And maybe a form being developed where it would be kind of more of a checkoff thing? And then if you needed, if there needed to be comments made, they could be brief and just focused on what that, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, and there is, there is training. And there is training in Neogov and it hasn't, the minute we talked about developing more in depth and meeting with each office. There is also a performance review that I developed and had reviewed priorly for law attorney to make sure that it's the best evaluation. But again, I struggle with that because I do understand different departments have different needs and different evaluations are needed for different positions. So I don't want to sit here and say that the one that is created in there is one-size-fits-all. I do think you might need different ones depending on your department.
Well, I'll talk to that. We had a performance evaluation last year, which we basically we've done this year. So we're in progress, performance evaluation is a work in progress. Because you do do one one year, you learn, okay, this isn't giving this information you want or need, so you locate it and change it. So like anything to me, performance evaluations are a living document that you will age your, to your office needs, but also to the position and or what other information you're trying to get. So I, one of the, I'd like to have just a checkoff box thing where it's really easy.
A general thing.
Yeah, yeah.
But each office would be happy with that.
You know, I like the idea of, you know, trying to, just that, I love the idea of working with someone who has more experience than the one I do. And like, that's creating awareness, you have to be that person with me or somebody, you know, okay. You know, here's what I would change, you know, put through it and that. I share your concerns about sharing that information, the performance reviews, that's another struggle in our office that I'd be up. And so I'm open, I would really, if we're going to go down this road, I would really like to have further discussion on that topic.
I have, I have, sorry.
If, I don't know if the commissioners would decide, as far as that policy, but is, would there be a way to make them anonymous? So like Nick has to employ, he decides randomly number them, whatever the numbers are, that could be what's in the system that would be named.
I mean, I, so I need them for the file, right? And like when people file for unemployment, when people, when we have employee issues, those are things that I'm going towards. I'm saying, what are your documents, what's your documentation, what's your discipline like? What happened, why did we let this person go? I need all of that for unemployment, for issues, all of that submitted anyway. And then I keep the complete employee file for seventy-five years. That's the hard record in the office. So I don't understand, I personally don't understand why it would be that way. I think HR should have access to those documents and they should be in our files so that the county can adequately provide records. But I'm more than happy if the commissioners or Bob want to speak on that.
I asked that just because that's, I've heard that this is for several people, so I was curious.
Do you have an undisclosed reference?
Yep, I do have an NTI and a...
That's Kaylee.
And Amber, the entire office.
But I think it comes back into play that as an elected official, you feel like you're losing more control. Like everything's being dictated that you do. And let's be honest, Megan, I've called sometimes and you're like, let's talk about it before you...
Oh, all right, I have them.
Like, and then there's been times where you're like, well, you should, you know, like, I mean, I kind of, you know, if I'm to come to you, like you're an option, but I'm held accountable to the, you know, and we've talked about this. But I feel like I'm, I put my name on there, I'm held accountable, you know. I think that's a great idea with having a standard, like with you. And because the wording I use, sometimes you don't prefer. And so you could limit my wording, but I would probably say, let's flip a coin, if you want to review this year, yes or no? But, but I mean, I do feel like you have to...
But if you don't do it, we're going to penalize, from what I understand, if we don't do that, it potentially could be penalizing the employee for not doing it.
We...
Because they wouldn't accept you for something.
That's not...
Wouldn't that would you say?
It's something that's just can discuss, but there's nothing happening with that.
Well, I'm just saying, going forward.
But it sounds like it could go down to that.
That was my understanding is if you don't do the performance and you don't do it in Neogov, then the council's going to say, three percent mandatory, but only two percent if you've done your performance and...
This is, this is my, this is my standing on personal.
I think, I think Lisa said, Lisa's paranoid words. Elected officials are elected officials. Like you all sign up, campaign, put your name down, you're, you're a hope to the people that elected you. And I think if you go for a job, they'll vote you out. I do have concern with someone mandate and say that you have to do something as an elected official. Like if you say, hey, I don't want to do this and you have justification or reasons for it. I would use the sheriff as an example, only because the city there. But I think about people who want to leave, especially in the law enforcement community, they want to go somewhere and say, oh, I'm leaving and I want to go to another department because we see this a lot in Boone County. Oh, what's going on? If someone requests, you know, a personnel file, so certain degree, there's certain things that are public record and certain things are not, but just saying, hey, what was your performance evaluation? Getting into this back and forth in this legal battle, like, well, just a performance evaluation, this is a legal document. There's nothing bad, if it was good or what, how do you dictate that? Saying, well, I want to be able to have access to it or not.
Yeah, to speak to that in a nutshell, under Sheriff Campbell's administration, we started doing performance reviews for a year for all our employees. And what we found out is that if I liked you, you were going to get a good performance review. If I didn't like you, now this goes from Sergeant... If I didn't like you, now this goes from sergeant to captain to everybody throughout the office, right? So we could go back to Jennifer, if you're saying that, uh, doing it anonymous. Mike, can you talk to that, what we've done the last two years about career admin and, I guess, as far as the anonymous for ourselves?
Well, what we've done, uh, again, the last couple of years is that we use a survey and we really just use our commands now. Tony and I are on everyone we send to our employees and we basically tell them to rank us, uh, in about ten different categories. And they are purely anonymous, so we kind of get those back, uh, and it kind of gives us a feel. And we talk about it amongst ourselves and we share it with our individual, uh, agencies or, or department heads and say, you know, this is what your people are saying about you, uh, and stuff. Is that where you were headed, Tony?
Yeah, that's where I was headed, but I think you go back to, you know, early office level, that's your information. I don't know that that information should be shared.
I, I, yeah, that, that same, yeah, that's what I'm hearing. And I think it should be an opt-in or opt-out. If a department head, I'm sorry, but an officer is new, you may have people who are new or newly elected, that they come in and say, hey, I only try to have my information because I need to train, I need to develop it. I think it should be completely up to that elected official if they want to opt-in or opt-out. But mandating it, I think even with Sheriff's, um, that two percent discretion there gets even in a tricky situation to say, well, probably the man they, if you end up penalizing potentially be really good employees, they'll just say, hey, they did a really good job, but I need to force my hand and give them this raise because I didn't conform to you telling me that I had to open up my performance reviews to this person.
That's exactly right. And if the council wanted to know what that was, I mean, you know, obviously we have a liaison assigned to every office in here. They could ask for that, we're not hiding anything.
Well, you, well, you also have inter, interpersonal department transfers, which is why we want to transfer from one, you know, agency to another. And if they just got a bad, you know, review from someone, like you said, just didn't like you, they're like, I did well this whole time, but you supported my pony, so I gave you a bad review and they want to transfer, that could literally mess someone up.
And that's what we were seeing in the Campbell administration, I do think they're doing. Because of that, they were just all over the board and they, there wasn't, you know, it depends on who's reviewing you, right? So I think if you go to perform, performance review, we've really got to do our due diligence on are we doing that the right way? And are they getting judged the right way too? As far as the sheriff's HR, we've always done our HR, so we've been back and forth, people sending emails, go back and forth in this room. But we have always done our HR. There's a lot, it's very robust, our, um, policies, procedures are very robust. And I will do, I've talked to Dan, I'll do the bare minimum of this, but as far as sharing information, Brittany does a great job, we're not for her, so.
And I don't, I don't want to get too off track, because this isn't something that, I mean, that hasn't been voted on by a compensation committee or a council. Um, I think the question is, is what, who can do them and when, if they can be done, done anonymously or not. But they're not even required right now, so.
No, it's just an option, I think so.
Then, and to make that, I want to make sure that everyone understands, at least in the commissioner's office, all the information that HR has, I have never seen, nor will I ever. That is all personal information, it's filed, locked, never will I ever see any of that. That is her job to take care of that and I'll never. So I want to make sure that everyone's clear on that. I don't know anything about any of you, period. And that's what it has to be. Just like Sheriff's Department does not want us to know about the employees there. And I, I completely agree with you in how you're doing that. You let the, the elected official and the managers take care of that information, you let HR help you with that. But I guarantee you one hundred percent that I have never, ever seen anything or heard any conversations on anything about any employee, on any of that stuff, it is none of my business, period.
Okay, I just want some clarification on the onboarding process, so I know we've done some stuff through Neo Gov and I had somebody onboard a couple of months ago and then they needed to do some more stuff with the auditor's office. So are we going through the auditor's office or are we going through Neo Gov? And I look here, I just don't want them to do it twice, that's, that's my thing. So, do we have like a, yeah, a policy or something in place? Because again, onboarding process was fine with Neo Gov, um, but then we had to do a couple of extra things with the auditor's office, which again is fine, I just don't want, you'd already done it on Neo Gov, so I just don't want them to do it twice and or I'm going to probably be onboarding somebody at the first meeting, so you tell me. I don't mind just going through you, I don't mind going through Neo Gov, it doesn't, it doesn't, payroll is not utilized to the other.
Okay. I have a question, so if we, um, fill out, uh, HSA change deposit form, um, I'm assuming like entering to that auditor's office and to that, how do you guys know that I filled out that form? How do you get notice of that?
We received emails from Neo Gov stating that the employee has completed their portions and that it's assigned to both HR and the auditor to go in and review the link. And that email has a link directly to that document open and then they're able to complete from that link.
And then, I think I figured this out yesterday, can the employees always go back and see that form? Like, I can go to Hallmark, it isn't.
This, we have, we have employees saying that they can.
Is, there's spousal form, they said they submitted it and they can't see it.
Oh, they can see it, um, it might just be I need to show them.
I think you would afford, I think as a proof, I guess that's.
Yeah, that's the biggest.
So you can see, this is a bad example.
How's that information getting transferred back to the office holder to make sure that those people are getting to you what they need?
So if you log in, you can see under my forms and processes, under e-forms. And again, this is just a dummy account, so I don't really want to pull up people's things or bits of that information. But you can see my team's forms and processes, so you can see who's done what. And then, uh, the employee can see under my forms and processes, that's where they can see their completed form or they can actually go under here, under my profile and documents. So it should be in two spots in the system, it should just be in the respective folder where, so like, the spousal part will totally be under benefits.
So Brittany can see everybody?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so Brittany can see the entire process for the entire sheriff's department team.
I'm having to show you on that.
But what we would need access to is all our employees to show and see, make sure that they've got everything.
Oh, okay, yeah. Megan, so Brittany needs to be able to see that all the employees that actually have done it, is there a way for her to see that?
So that if they haven't done it, she can phone with employees to say, why haven't you done this?
Yeah, so remember when I'll see that video, it showed that, like, we saw everybody making progress. I, because you're sending them the paper, I'm going through and checking it all so you can see if it's done and if I've done it. Um, but yeah, she can, it would be under my team's processes, right? And where I was. It would be here.
It would be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I have a question with Debbie, because I'm assuming Debbie needs to be able to see similar things, but for like all employees? If she was, not just for her office, she could see it for all employees?
For like payroll related documents, yes.
Okay. And then, um, if she needs to make, if anyone needs to make a change, like, sorry, Debbie, I have to go to you now. If Debbie decides to make a change to like the HSA form or tax form, does she have the ability to do that?
So I got a question, if we have an employee that fills out all the correct paperwork and puts it in the portal and the auditor says she's not going to go look at it, and my employee that's brand new continues to get paper checks, what are we going to do about that? We need to get some kind where they get their check, instead of being sick the day before Thanksgiving and they can't get their check, what are we going to do to be able to make sure our employees get paid?
I guess the question would be is, why is Debbie choosing that to use the system?
This is an HR system, it's not a payroll system.
Does it have the forms in there that somebody filled out? I guess I don't understand. The forms are there, I have to go manually pull them out and send them over another way through an email? But it's now in public information, it's much worse.
And this system is all secure? Emails are not?
Well, for one, if you have bank information, you're supposed to deliver it to my office in person. Because we've had too many fraud cases with account numbers, so.
We had that form get delivered and then not get processed either, so then we don't have a copy of the form. So we have the same situation if we're doing it in hand, paper, and they don't have a copy of it.
Right, so it was put, so your person brought the forms here, they were put in Neo Gov and then they were denied to me when I asked them for copies.
They were put in the system and, and shared with the, via the system, because we don't.
Neo Gov, Neo Gov system.
Via Neo Gov, because of the IT surge, we're no longer wanting to utilize the shared drive, we lost ten weeks worth of data. It didn't seem prudent to upload back ten weeks and forward when we're, we have this system that shares between offices. This system, the HR or the direct deposit forms are also set up to where the auditor's office signs up, signs off that they had like personal contact. So if someone logs into the system and completes this form, it immediately goes over to whoever's in the payroll group right now, it's just Debbie. Um, and it has that piece of it where the auditor signs off, they had the personal contact with the person. Um, and the employee can then see that that change has been signed off on in the system.
We, and we had this conversation in our meeting too, so I'll just go ahead and ask it. Um, and continue to have meetings with Neo Gov, the meeting that we talked about setting up, which I'm good with still going through and listening to what they have to say. But at the same time, to me, Debbie should be in that meeting, because if we can get it locked down, then on payroll things, she should be locked down. She's awesome. I mean, they're not speaking for her, but she can speak for herself, but like, being able to lock it down so other users can't see it.
Right, and no one else, so the employee fills it out, it goes specifically to the payroll group for this section of the form, so they know someone submitted a change, they get an email. I have not been told to add anybody else to that group, since Debbie is the only one in that group, she gets that form. And that's how it's set up, so it is locked down to only payroll office holders, can't see direct deposit forms just because it's banking information. So really, it's HR and payroll and then the HR user, and maybe, but that's it.
Is there any other elected official that's in here that's sitting here thinking, let's flip a coin? Because I feel like we just keep going back and forth, back and forth, I'm like, what the hell, we're going to do? We're not going to, we're going to do it this way with Debbie, we're going to do this way with Megan, and I feel like we're all caught between.
I think that's what we're trying to figure out today, like.
Flip coin, because we've got stuff to do. Heads, heads we go with, the tails we don't, and let's move on.
She's the HR director, you can use it for HR. Payroll is under the auditor's office and payroll will not be utilized out of Neo Gov.
Okay, so.
Why?
Payroll related.
Yeah, I don't get that, I agree with that position.
I guess as elected official, I have that position to take.
But I just want to clarify, anything payroll just comes to you? Anything HR goes to you?
Don't forget about the employees.
That's clear.
This is all about the employees. We are elected officials, yes, everyone in the county either likes you or they hate you, and I got all that. So, but we've got to take care of the employees and give them the best information and have them, all this stuff here makes it so much easier for employees, including me as an employee, when I, when I did the, um, the other day, the spousal, that took me less than five minutes to do that. It's really simple and easy to use.
So we're taking care of the employee, when the employee brings information to HR, I reach out because my backup says, hey, we need this for the file. Um, I reach out to HR and say, can I please have a copy? Nope, can't take it out of Neo Gov. I have a problem with that, that's not helping the employee.
It's a simple program, all you have to do is click onto that email that you get.
I'm the bad guy, yeah, absolutely.
You're not the bad guy.
I'm more than happy to show you how to log in and do it, but I don't understand why.
But I haven't been invited to any meetings.
Yes, you have.
None of these meetings you've had the last month and a half that I've been invited to.
No, to your own. I've reached out multiple times and Amber has as well about sitting down with me and going through the system and making sure that it works.
The last meeting was with Neilson.
When she was meeting with, in department heads, she wasn't meeting with like, oh, I'm going to invite all the elected officials. It was individual elected officials.
Debbie, that's the auditor.
I know, I thought you were Merry Christmas. Yeah, she was, she's, she reached out to individual elected officials in department heads and met with them individually. This, nobody had a meeting with elected officials in department heads and didn't invite you. Like, I don't want you to think that, that, that did not happen.
Tony, was I at any of your Neo Gov meetings?
Your, your meeting, but I didn't, so they met just with the sheriffs, I was.
Well, previously with Brittany.
Right.
And previously with Mike and Joy, and previously with Mike, Joy.
Right, and I've reached out multiple times.
But as far as.
That's like, that, the old reason Mike, I mean, Mike and Black is because of Kidney coverage, I mean. So, but the other thing too, too, is, is that what I was trying to do is to set up a meeting with Neo Gov to see if they could lock it down to just the individual. That's your information, it goes back to, speak your mind, but it goes back to me, it's performance evaluations. You're the elected official, it's your information.
But they find a role, but they find a.
And that's what I'm saying, is can you lock it down? I don't know.
We can, but the problem is, and here I am, being attacked in public meeting. Nobody ever said, would you be willing to do pay, put payroll forms in Neo Gov? It was automatically done, no question to the auditor. I'm just going to give it my best. Payroll comes to our house, that's it. And if Jeff wants to roll his eyes at me, if Bob wants to roll his eyes at me, if Amber, my own council member wants to roll his eyes at me, I was never asked, it was forced, and I'm not doing it.
Well, we did sit down with Nielsen and with Max and with IT, and we had a meeting about like the onboarding checklist and we talked about those checklists and made sure that it was set up for each department. So we did, you were in that room, but we did talk about that?
We did, with Nielsen, and I never agreed. I have not been for this from day one. And that's not a secret, that's not been a secret. Nielsen, I have an email from Nielsen that said, I hope to convince you someday to use the system. I'm still not convinced.
But this is to help streamline the process, not just for the employee, but for the office holder as well. And it should be applied to you as well to streamline it. The employee can fill out the form at any given time and you're not waiting on HR or anybody else to upload the form. Like, it's automatically notified to you in an email showing that this is completed. We have situations where departments are waiting on employee ID numbers because we haven't gotten anything from your office yet. This should all hold everyone accountable of, hey, I received this at this date and time, you do your part, HR does their part, and you streamline the whole process, not only for the employee, but for the office holders who is expecting their employees to be inside TCP and being able to punch in and punch out on day one. But we can't do that if we're not streamlining the process, so we need a partnership with all of the office holders and you, and HR to utilize the system.
Which we had with the shared drive.
Which failed.
Not on my, not in my office, it did not fail. I did not lose anything from the shared.
We've spent the last four months recouping information that we put in there. I'm new, I'm, I, to this day, I'm finding things that.
I didn't lose anything related in the shared drive.
You did from what was added on our person, you said, hey, we have an email from you stating, I need this document, this document, this document, so you should admit it because it was saved after.
Right, that happened right at the time it happened.
Right.
The previous to that, I don't, I did not lose anything that.
But the system ended up failing, right? Like, you still log.
So you can guarantee that the system won't fail you then?
It's a cloud-based system, yes, it's going to store all the information. We're not going to lose it with another data search. Do you have other concerns with the system?
I have a lot of concerns with this system.
Do you mind sharing them?
Not publicly.
I'm more than happy.
Can I speak, I mean, I'm just thirty-plus year employee here, um, and just trying to be a taxpayer and just kind of looking at it because like, also domestic law, I think, uh. But, the council is for it, or, I'm sorry, commissioners are for it, the council is paying for it, okay? I can count all the depart, all the elected officials in here, which affects all their offices. To me, it should be up to those elected officials to vote as the county for them to say, yes, I want it, no, I don't want it. And if the overwhelming majority in a democracy we live in says, yeah, it's a good thing, we need to go for it, because then I think, then it goes back to the council to say, they can say, well, yeah, the overwhelming majority of them want it, and they want it, and then we go from there. That, that to me is simple to go along with, because you're an elected official. I don't have an opinion in it, because I'm just the employee that I think would benefit it. And I see Nick sitting here saying, why should I have to send it here, why should I have to send it here and do all that? When it all should be under one umbrella.
I would, I, I thank you for that. I would just put a glow on it before you say whether they want it or not. Let's just go back to the suggestion from the workshop this summer. And sit all of the elected officials down at the table together and say, hey, here's what it is. Do you want this? Kind of maybe that's a little bit of what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay, hey, beers, and if not this, then what? I think, because if you just say, this is the only option, if you don't have an alternative, then you're forcing me to say, this is all that you have. Like, you're just saying, hey, look, if I don't have an alternative, then you're forcing me to say yes.
Agreed.
But, but in that instance, I would tell Debbie, I promise you I'm not gaining up on you, so please don't take.
I'm used to it, it's okay.
Okay, well, forgive me, I promise you I'm not. I, I would say, if not NeoGov, I would for you and your staff to have an alternative.
And I do.
Okay, that's fair. And the reason I say that is because I would be honest with you, if you don't have an alternative, then you, you leave everyone else in that room with no option than to say, hey, we're going to go NeoGov. So if you have an alternative, then great, but it has to be something that gets a compliment or works with NeoGov, I don't know. It needs to be an alternative, but everyone still has to be, but still. I would say, I think that was a conversation that happened at the council meeting, the budget workshop, was to figure out something else that would work. And to your point, Chief Devin Beer, is letting everyone sit down at the table and say, what works? What do you need? And then we'll get out, this, this conversation will hopefully run out of hours.
So Debbie, is your, what you're thinking of, is it going to work with NeoGov or would it replace NeoGov? But it would include payroll? Is that, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to get details set, but it would be a system that would be, you believe would be user friendly and would integrate better?
Yes.
So can we do this? Can we convene council members, commissioners, I love that thought, change, you need to gain it, where? Jennifer, all of us, all of our students, to figure out what this would look like and just have a conversation? It looks like that has to be another public meeting for all of us to get. Debbie, and Megan, and whoever else, me out, voting out, we're going to sit down and have another conversation. Elected officials. Are you all over to it?
Yeah.
Donnie, go work with you, my son, I'm going to work for you. Okay, I'll watch out, we'll figure something out.
That's all, that's right, that's, that's fine, uh, for us department heads, it'd be nice to know that we can have a system. I don't want to go back to paper.
No.
And we don't want to go with this for everybody and nobody wants it. And they take their vote, can we get something for department heads? We've got a lot of people onboarding and.
If there's a different system, let's look at the cost. That's the best thing.
If there's a reduced cost, I just.
Yeah.
It sounds like any system how it is is an HR system. Like Debbie just said, that she doesn't want to use an HR system. I would just like me an interim plan until.
Yeah, I don't, I've heard what Debbie said, I don't want, again, I would, I would love for you to have a voice in whatever. If you think there's an alternative that can work, I would be more than open to listen to that, let everyone hear, see what the solution is. And Chief Devin Beer, I think you bring up a good point, but the department heads have some say and understand everybody's needs and I think we'll get it figured out. So, Donnie, I'll, uh, we'll figure out something, we'll get something together.
Sometime in January.
Sometime in January.
There's no time this month.
Yeah, yeah.
We're continuing what we're doing now.
Yeah, yeah, we're just.
We're not, we're not backing off what we're doing now.
Do we are not working just with it's all, we're just going to figure it out? I would like to tell her today, that would be great because I'm going to hire her. In the meantime, if we're not using that, whatever, I don't, again, I have no skin to hide, don't care, just like to know if we're going to use it.
Sounds like. The other part of that is when we talked about the drives. Yeah, I have reached out to Sean and he says, if there is any change concern in the cost of the drives, but the IT's concern is the number of files that we maintain for employees that will print it and the cost of multiple packets for each employee. I'm just, yeah, that's something to consider when we're talking about this.
And, and one thing I will mention, I'm, I'm, that's a generally sensitive topic, is I am going to include Sean in this discussion because I think it's critically important to have IT. So, Donnie, y'all, we are all going to Sean as well. Because I think it's, it's important to have IT as part of the discussion.
All right.
I don't, I can make one last comment. I don't want anyone to accuse anyone of being a bad guy. Like, I will, also, because communication has been a big war. Um, even just like council members, like, didn't know Aaron had been in some of the meetings or emails. So I think communication has been an issue and it's something that we can all work on to share. But I don't want anyone to walk away like feeling that there's a blame or that there is anyone to blame in this bill. Let's all work together, we can figure it out next year and make things more efficient.
And I admit that I need to learn more to post.
Are you just talking about the program?
Literally, I've been talking about.
I couldn't hear you so.
Oh, Debbie, I had to ask for a question.
Okay, there you go. So.
Donnie, face your flaws together.
What is the expectation? Or is the H and department continuing to use NeoGov? And the expectation is we're downloading that, uploading things into the shared drive?
Can we, can we? Can we do this? Can we work, can we work as business as usual? And then I will work with you and some other, um, council members over the next week to find a date in January. And then we'll say, hey, that way, because if you try to put something in place between now and that meeting, I think it may get a little more convoluted. If we can find the time, like maybe the first or second week in January. And then Debbie, nothing against you and your team, but if we can kind of figure out, like, if you can kind of start putting together, like, what your plan is to present it back early January, if you can kind of couple those together. Is that okay with you? Donnie, is that okay with you?
Yep.
Kay, is that working? Okay.
I don't have an answer for you. Basically, the answer is go back to the old program. But we are not taking away any of this right now. We're going to continue this. So, so if you want to print off, if you want forty-five different files for every employee, then I guess that's what we'll do through the end of the year.
In the interim, though, like you can access the PDF and do it in the shared drive right now. I'm not saying actually I know.
You can't, you can't email any of this.
So it's, but you don't email, you put.
The shared, we don't email, the shared drive, we email, right?
Okay, so the employee, you want them to, go ahead, Mike. When you onboard your new employee on January one, she'll do everything through NeoGov. We will download it and put it in the shared drive for Debbie. Is that, can I understand it? I just need to know what I'm doing.
Do we, can I ask you this? Do we have, uh, we have drop offs or anything? Well, we have, with the share, do we have a separate folder with shared drive to just only serve you that access to?
Yes, we have multiple shared drives.
So we have a drive between the HR and auditor's?
Okay, let's just use that. Because the, is the HR thing been the surge thing been resolved? Like where you don't have any other home going issues? I know you've gone.
No, not now.
Can you use that? Can you use that one drive? Debbie, are you okay using just that one drive for Neo?
So that's what we're only going, that's the way we use.
But is that, is it accessible? Are you okay, are you all okay using that? Can we add? Val, good lunch.
Thank you all. Anytime, everybody go find a rock, Carol really appreciates it.